Opposed. Page 25.
I move that we approve page 25.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Page 26. Do we want to approve page 26?
I move we approve page 26.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Page 27.
Yes, Policy 7K3, locate new commercial or industrial development along Guide Meridian within designated urban growth areas, rural communities and rural business areas in a manner that does not disrupt the Guide's regional transportation function. I want to change locate new to limit and within. So it reads this, limit commercial or industrial development along Guide Meridian to designated urban growth areas, rural communities and rural business areas. And as far as the period, in a manner that does not disrupt the Guide's regional transportation function, I'm not sure how you would measure that unless you put a ban on drive-throughs or something. So basically, I'll keep that verbiage at the end. Let's change adding limit and to between Meridian and designated.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Yeah, question.
Commissioner Hahnku.
John, why change it from what's proposed? I'm trying to see any difference between this.
Because the whole idea of lammers is to limit more intensive rural development. And this is basically saying locate new or industrial development along the Guide Meridian. You know, it's just an emphasis, but the...
Well, isn't the word within designated urban growth areas the same as to designated? I mean, within emphasizes that it needs to be within a designated urban growth area or rural communities and rural business, which is a lammert.
Well, you've got that back door in a way that does not disrupt the Guide's transportation function. I'm not really that comfortable with it. And the idea is that by saying locate new, we're encouraging you more things that will disrupt the transportation function by putting these new commercial and industrial developments along what's becoming a strip mall between Bellingham and Linden.
Commissioner Tygro.
Isn't that the idea of that you would locate, that you want, if you're going to have a new business come in, that that's where they're going to be, is inside the lammert?
It says along the Guide Meridian. And it's under economics.
Commissioner Blile.
It doesn't talk about located and within the lammert that exist along the Guide. It talks about communities and business areas that are negotiable or debatable. I would like to see that changed to the lammert as they are designated along the Guide. So that, I know that's friendly and it shouldn't be done, but that's my discussion.
First, we'll vote on this motion. And then you can make...
All right. The amendment would be limit...
No, the motion.
I'm sorry, the motion. Motion would be to limit commercial or industrial development along Guide Meridian to designated urban growth areas, rural communities and rural business areas in a manner that does not disrupt the Guide's regional transportation function.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Okay.
So I'd like to change.
Okay.
I'd like to try again.
Yep.
I'd like to get another notch, so here we go. Limit new commercial or industrial development along Guide Meridian within designated lammert in a manner...
That's not an area that you can change, though.
Yeah, change that.
That's not an underlying area that you can, you can't change.
Well, I'm not sure I want to change it. You mean I can't change it because I can't...
It's not underlined.
But you can change it if you would strike rural communities and insert designated lammert.
Okay, I can do that. All right, got it, got it. Within designated urban growth areas, lammert, and remove rural communities and rural businesses in a manner that does not disrupt the Guide's regional transportation functions.
Second.
There's a question.
Oh, Mr. Davis.
Just want to clarify that rural communities are type one lammers and rural businesses are type three lammers, especially when they're capitalized there. That means that's the comprehensive plan designation, meaning that's a type one lammert and that's a type three lammert, and those criteria are set out in two JJ and two LL or something, back where we just were.
All right, I'll try it again.
Commissioner Bell.
My take on both these motions is really what you want to do is change the word locate to limit, because basically they've both said essentially the same thing that all the rest of the verbiage says.
Well, that's a nice point, except that until rural communities and rural businesses were clarified as lammert, I wasn't happy. But now that I know they're lammert, I'm just perfectly happy. And I would like to try this one more time, seeing as, I like to say limit new commercial or industrial development along Guide Meridian within designated rural community lammert and rural business lammert, right? So that people at least know when they read that, that it's a lammert.
And you didn't include urban growth areas as well?
No. Yeah, I didn't include urban growth areas. Did I skip that?
Yeah.
Sorry. Okay. So I would just say limit and add lammert after the rural communities and rural businesses so we don't ever have to go through this again.
Is there a second?
A second then.
Commissioner Bell.
Yeah, I don't see a reason for the change. I think it says, other than the word limit, I think it's fine.
Did you put the word limit in there? I didn't think you did. Oh, I retract that.
Yeah, I did.
I'm sorry.
We need to speak up more and use the mics.
That's not what I heard. I retract my second then.
Did you hear locate? Is that what you heard?
Yeah.
Well, maybe everybody else heard locate too. That's okay. Okay, it's fine with me.
Are you withdrawing your motion?
No, I just, I'm just saying what Gary heard.
Well, I do, if I heard locate new and then adding the word lammert after rural communities and after rural business, and I do appreciate what John's pointing out, because it is often misunderstood, what does that mean? And, and...
We just spent 10 minutes doing that.
Exactly. And very clearly that way, it does enunciate what, where that is, and people are going to have a better idea of what it means. So, yeah, I would support that.
Okay, should you want me to repeat it?
So with the motion on the table, I'd like to restate with a friendly amendment that the word limit be removed to locate and the rest of the amendment stay the same. And that's the friendly amendment that we as a board now have.
So we have to vote on it?
All in favor of accepting the friendly amendment?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No. It's accepted.
So now we vote on that motion.
Okay.
Could we have the motion read again?
One more time, use the mic, please.
Could we have the motion read again, please?
Commissioner Blile.
Locate new commercial or industrial development along Guide Meridian within designated urban growth areas, rural community lammert, are they once? Or just say lammert? And rural business lammert in a manner that does not disrupt the Guide's regional transportation function.
Is there a second?
I second it.
Okay. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion passes with, was it Bell? And Lesal?
I was an aye.
I was an aye.
Oh, you were an aye. Who were the...
Who were their names?
I was a no because I don't like the removal of key intersections.
Commissioner Rainey.
No, I was, I had to count both.
Page 27.
Move to accept.
All in favor to accept page 27?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
No.
Page 28. Any changes?
Move to accept.
Seconds.
All in favor of accepting page 28?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Page 29 of 29.
Move to accept.
Pardon?
Move to accept.
Second.
All those in favor of accepting page 29, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay.
Yay. Let's get on with the maps.
Okay, do we want to move on to the maps?
Moving right along.
First map is Acme.
I'd like to make a motion. I mean, this is a motion just to speed this up, and I like a motion that we accept the maps based on the original planning commission recommendations and findings to the council. And that would clear this all up, and we'd be just square and ready to go for the public comments.
Second.
Any discussion? Commissioner Bell.
Really?
Like that had a snowball's chance.
With my record at this thing today, who cares about a snowball?
With that, I will, I will speak against that, because we've been through all the changes, and I think they do mean something. And I would urge the commission to vote on this one first, and then I'll reintroduce the opposite to follow.
All those in favor of the motion?
Aye.
All opposed? No.
Aye.
I'd like to make a motion.
Motion fails.
I'd like to move that we accept...
Commissioner Bell.
I'd like to move that we accept all of the maps as presented under the new drawings.
I'll second that.
Okay, for purposes of discussion, as indicated before, I'm not going to vote on the Point Roberts map because of possible conflict of interest. And I also think that commissioners who have property or business interests that are covered under these maps also consider that as well.
Oh, Bryce left.
I'm just not, I don't perceive a conflict of interest here. If we all live in Wachem County.
On policy, we all live in Wachem County, so we're...
Then it affects every one of us. I mean, none of us can vote.
No, that's absolutely incorrect. If you have a, you know, personal interest can be defined, you know, by your proximity to the location. If I had some personal interest that was going to be promoted by voting on the Point Roberts lammert, then it would certainly accrue to my benefit. And I would recuse myself from voting, but I will comment on Point Roberts map to the extent that it needs to be commented on. So, I don't know if that's discussion on your motion. Okay, that's all I've got to say.
If you want to hear from me, you know, this is kind of a difficult area when you're dealing with a legislative matter and the appearance of fairness doctrine doesn't apply, but there is something beyond that, which is a conflict of interest that applies on the state level and arguably applies to the county council. I think you're probably reaching to say that it applies to an advisory body like the planning commission. But assuming that it did, if you are likely to receive a direct benefit from a particular vote one way or the other, it could be perceived as a conflict of interest. But I think it has to be some type of a direct financial benefit.
Well, if I had property on the guide that would be enhanced, if in fact that new map was going to include my property, then it would be an obvious financial interest.
I think if you were a council member, that, I don't know that that doctrine of conflict of interest applies to an advisory body on the county level. It's arguable whether it even applies to the county council, but it is clear that it applies to state officers.
Well, it applies too if we're in a quasi judicial position, like if we were doing something, say, on a gravel pit or something.
Right, but...
But this hearing, for purposes of clarification, this is strictly a legislative...
That's correct, yeah.
I'm still not going to...
Are we appointing discussion here?
Commissioner Hahnku.
I'm going to speak against voting as a whole. I am going to propose a change to a map, and cannot do that if we vote as a whole.
Commissioner Bell.
I would say that we could take individual maps now that we've got a motion on the floor and make friendly amendments on an individual map basis, if you'd like to do it. It just keeps us from going map by map. But I've got no dog in this hunt, so I was just trying to speed it along.
Do we have a motion or a second?
Would you restate your motion?
The motion is that we accept the April 12, 2011 drawings as submitted.
Is there a second?
It was second.
It was second, yeah. Why not, if you have maps that you want to make adjustments on, could you not do a friendly amendment and withdraw those maps from the total? So that we're not voting on all of them one by one.
That's a good point. My friendly amendment would be to withdraw the Point Roberts April 12, 2011 draft from consideration at this time.
I'm going to go back to our original, well, let's first vote on the motion. Commissioner Rainey.
I also have a map that I would like to talk about.
Commissioner Blile.
I think for us to vote on these maps without the public input is not what we had a meeting about two weeks ago. And I think we need to have public input to temper or enhance the discussion we have about these, because somebody, again, may present information that may be lacking and we need. So we have to, at least respect the public before we vote on these maps.
Well, I think the idea was to find where we had a majority agreement so that at the end of the evening, we had it sort of boiled down to a few issues and any new information that would come to us during the public hearing, then we could incorporate. And that would keep us from going through the whole thing after the public hearing.
But I think, you know, I think that's a good point. I mean, we're done, and it's 4:30. There's no rush to judgment on doing the maps. I think that we do have people here this evening that do want to attend, because it is a public meeting. We, you know, we've got the time to do that. I think there's, you know, that's a good idea. Why don't we just table this for right now and take it up and vote it at the end of the evening?
I would like to speak against that, if I may.
Okay.
My point here, and I'm going to make it as a question to start with, if we, whatever changes that we recommended and changes we made today, is the public going to be aware of those tonight? Is there, are they going to be able to get that in front of them?
What I would like to do, I was just thinking of this, at the beginning of the public hearing tonight, before people come up, I could come up as staff and summarize the changes that are proposed by the planning commission through their informal votes. If, I think there are probably two or three right now that there are some recommended changes, and I could do the same thing. If we do go through and take informal votes on the maps, I could highlight any changes to the maps as well and even run through them.
Okay, that's exactly where I was going, and I feel it's imperative that we do go through the maps, and if we do have any changes, that we get those recommendations out there so the public can comment. We still have the opportunity to adjust any parts of this after the public has had their input. I agree that we, that that is very necessary. I agree with John that that is very necessary, that we do get the public input, but they need to know where we're going with this.
Commissioner Bell.
I'm going to ask that we call my question, because it's going to go down in flames anyway, and we can come back with a...
Join the club.
All in favor of accepting...
Oh, sorry.
Yeah, I would, I would say that I think, I agree with John on his, as far as the public, I think the comments will be probably more on the maps and on the content. But yet, we can get quite a bit out of the way and then take those into consideration later.
Okay, let's vote on the motion. Commissioner Bell, will you restate the motion?
That we accept the April 12, 2011 draft of the maps as presented.
All in favor of the motion? Say aye. Opposed?
No.
Aye.
Unanimous. I knew it was coming down.
To, in the interest of time, instead of going page by page, why don't we just propose the maps that we'd like to make adjustments to? And if that's acceptable to the chair, I will start.
That's acceptable to the chair.
Poll of commissioners as to which maps they want to comment on?
Or just bring them up?
Mine's Point Roberts.
Mine is Laurel.
Commissioner Hahnku.
On the Laurel lammert, it was changed here at the most recent draft on April 12, 2001, to take a portion of the Meridian School District and place it outside of the lammert, specifically the parcel where the red dot is. That lammert, I was at that meeting, and there was a discussion about whether or not that new lammert boundary would intersect the buildings and, or not, and there wasn't any, any fact applied to it. But it indeed, that lammert boundary does bisect three of their buildings and goes right through it. And outside, so what it does by putting that lammert boundary there is three of their buildings are placed partially outside of the boundary, and also their parking, their main parking area is outside of it. And there's one other structure that I'm not sure what they're using it for right now, that is completely outside of the, out of the boundary. So I propose that the boundary, and make a motion that the boundary be placed back around and include that parcel.
Is there a motion?
Yeah, my motion would be that we, that because of bisecting the buildings and one building placed completely outside of it, that the boundary be moved back to where it was previously before the April 12 meeting, and that it include that parcel.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
If I can speak in favor of that further, I understand why the council took it and put it outside of that and took that parcel out. That parcel is zoned ag, and their reason for pulling it out was because it was zoned ag, similar to, I think it was Acme, where the fire station is, where they took that, also that little parcel out that was zoned ag behind the fire station. But the difference there is that parcel up at the fire station is actually used for ag and has the potential to be used for ag. This parcel has no potential to be used for ag. It's currently developed, it's being used by the school, it's got buildings on it, it's got parking lots on it. There are actually some portable classrooms that have been just recently placed there, and the new construction that's going to go out for bid in July is also going to be impacting that parcel. The problem there is that the zoning is incorrect, not the lammert boundary. The lammert boundary needs to include that parcel, and the zoning needs to be corrected. The Meridian School actually asked for that their zoning, in a letter, which some of you probably have, and is on the record, that their properties be rezoned to RGC. That didn't happen. But regardless, the boundary needs to, if the lammert is going to do what it's supposed to do, it needs to include the heavily developed property that's been there for a long time, and certainly before 1990.
Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Do you have any other maps?
I do not.
Commissioner Erickson, do you have any maps? Commissioner Uncles, do you have any?
I do not.
Commissioner Lesal.
Yes, Point Roberts, just a minor correction, and Gary or Sam, perhaps you can help me on this too, because you did the lammers for Point Roberts. That area there, east of Taiy Drive, on the northern quadrant of Point Roberts, on the original PC recommendation, that area was to be rural on both east and west of Taiy Drive up near the border. Are you with me? Yeah, there you go. And on the 2011 draft, it's got it as Resrec subdivision. What was the reason for that change, that open area east of the subdivision on Taiy
This, oops.
There you go. Right there, yes, just down a little bit, Resrec subdivision. That's the one change on that map from the 2009.
Can you go back to the left so we can see the... No, that's within the boundary. See, here's the boundary between the rural and the residential recreational subdivision. That, this is proposed. Yeah, there's no change on, between the 2009 and 2011, other than calling the whole area a rural community versus a rural center.
So where does the Resrec subdivision come in?
Well, that's still the designation for this area. You see the dotted line here is the boundary.
Yeah, I know, but the, my point is, is that open area there, that's the, what they call the Ho Chi Minh Trail in Point Roberts, that's all wetlands, and it's not really buildable for much. And that's why I think it's more appropriate to be rural. And in fact, I'll make that motion, to change the Resrec subdivision designation for that particular area to rural. How far down would that extend? How far south would that extend?
Mr. Davis.
Well, that's something that wasn't changed from the planning commission recommendation to the county council recommendation. It's still the same designation on the map, the rural recreation or...
What might be confusing is that they show the old, or the current existing designations in parentheses, and those are all proposed to go away. So on both maps, they're proposed to go away, but the labeling is just in a little different location.
That's right. All of these will be, and that's what this note up here says, all the labels here show the existing, but all of these labels will go to a comprehensive plan designation of rural community.
Okay, okay, as long, because I know that's bound to come up eventually, and I just wanted to clarify that. That's all.
Commissioner Blile, do you want to address any maps? Commissioner Bell? Commissioner Tygro? Commissioner Rainey?
I just wanted to clarify Kendall, southeast corner. I just wanted to know how that corner got into a lammert.
Can you bring up the analysis map for that?
If I'm missing something, I don't know, is there anything there?
Here's our analysis map. The parcels in yellow are parcels that were residentially developed as of 1990. Parcels in red were commercial development as of 1990. Parcels in pink were commercial development since 1990. And this is a public use, the school, in the orange color. So the lammert boundary includes these parcels to the east. There was apparently a house there in 1990. House here, and this is the substation, I believe, electrical substation. Here's the school out here. So that gives you an idea of the boundary. So it's built environment as of 1990 on all these parcels that you see in color.
What's the built environment in that southeast corner?
Well, yellow means, or the assessor's office recorded that as a residential use in 1990, so there may have been a house there. It looks like there was some sort of a house according to this. These are the 1991 aerials, by the way. We superimposed these on 1991 aerials to, to check to see if there were features there on the property.
It doesn't need to be a more intense use than that to qualify as a lammert?
Well, you know, typically it would be the more intensive uses. This is, you know, built environment as of 1990.
What's the size of that parcel? You got some sort of reference?
As I recall, that's around eight acres, nine acres, something like that.
Commissioner Blile.
I've got a farm with a house on it. Can we get it changed around?
Right, I see the point. But anyway, that's the rationale for that. But anyway, that's the rationale for that, for that line.
That answers my question.
Any more comments? Okay, we're not adjourned. We're just taking a break, and we'll resume our meeting, the public hearing, at 6:00.
Hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it, hold it.
Yeah, I'm okay.
Do we want to accept the rest of the maps as change?
I thought it had to be intense use, but it's apparently not. I didn't understand why it was there.
Do you want to make a motion?
Yes, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the remaining maps as proposed, as a recommendation.
I'll second that.
Commissioner Blile?
I can't go there again, because until we have public discussion and see what's going on to, to, to me, it's tough enough to make these decisions before we hear from the public, even, even a little bit. And to strengthen that position before we hear from the public, to me, is pretty insultive, and it just shows government doesn't give a toot. And we all profess, at least some of us profess to give a toot, and I think we're not doing a good job of that.
My intent wasn't to take and recommend that's what we move on to the council, it was just that as a planning commission, that we are, we're in agreement with those maps.
I understand that, and even to make that, that attempt, that these look good to us without, without actually hearing from somebody is a travesty.
Okay, I will withdraw my motion, and then we will pick it up later.
Any other comments?
I move we're here.
No, we're just going to take a...
We're not adjourned, we're just taking a long break.
Recession?
Recession. We'll be back at 6:00. Good work.
Does that mean they don't have to feed?
We are, we are drinking, we have a different meeting.